To the party of the second part.
Can't we take that up later?
No, let's get everything settled now. You're entitled to it.
Oh, now look.
Now, he's only trying to be fair.
You're too generous.
No, just fair.
That's all.
Well, if there's anything you want...
I don't need anything. What would I do with it?
But Larry...
He lives in a hotel. Where would he put it? He'd only have to pay storage.
That's right.
Well, I'd better change this.
What's his name?
Jones.
I don't trust him.
Well, here we are.
Mm-hmm. Baker versus Baker.
Sounds awful, doesn't it?
Everything legal does.
Oh, about this correspondent?
Yes.
Who's it going to be?
Oh, I don't know.
Anyone in mind?
Hmm, I have several promising prospects.
You have?
Mm-hmm. Yes, I think we can clear up the whole matter in about four weeks.
Sounds pretty good.
Uh-huh.
Tell me, it isn't Mary Logan?
Mary Logan is a correspondent? Well, I think I can do better than that. After everything's straightened out, I think I'll take a trip to South America.
Is it one of my friends?
No, you know I never cared very much for your friends.
Someone I know?
Darling, this is a divorce, not twenty questions.
I'm just curious.
Well, don't worry. You can rely on me. I won't disgrace the family name. No, it's good.
Larry, do you really want this divorce?
Absolutely, don't you?
Well...
Well, don't tell me you don't want it. That'd be a great disappointment. After all, you're seriously in love with Sebastian. Otherwise, you wouldn't have... well, we wouldn't be here. You're too fine a person. You'd have done all this just to fill out your day. I've always believed that you're sincere. I still do. I'd like to take that memory with me.
I'm sorry if I hurt you.
You couldn't have it. Don't worry, there'll be no bitterness.
Honey, isn't it? For six years, you were my husband. And now, you're the party of the first part. I used to be your Jill. And now, I'm here and after referred to, and that's all.
Well, everything's taken care of. What's the matter? What'd you do?
Nothing, just wondering some of the details.
I don't trust you, Baker. Darling, there's nothing to worry about. It's a very clean-cut agreement.
Alexander, please, I'm so nervous. Can't you understand?
Of course, we all have our little moods.
Now, let's read this again.
The following agreement has been reached...
Is unnecessary unless we can agree on the correspondent.
Well, it's not a good business.
Darling, it is.
Keep quiet. It is my business. You're not going to make me the laughingstock of the whole town with some girl, a girl I don't even know. Oh, no, you're not going to have that triumph, Mr. Baker. Goodbye.
Kicks?
Don't do that, Baker. Chill, chill, chill!
And that, my dear Mr. Jones, is what is known as protecting your original investment. Let's get a drink.
I think you softened her.
Sulfender? Destroyed her. She's going to come back and eat out of my hand. And what I'm going to do to Mrs. Jill Baker, here and after referred to as Jill Lamb Baker. If you want to buy a good piano, cheap Jones, you can have it.
No.
Oh, am I going to be difficult. I'm going to be the mad dog of 685 Park Avenue. Miles Baker!
Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mrs. Baker.
No, in case I have the correspondent.
Oh, well, you have to be found alone with him in your apartment, and he with his coat off.
I see. Alexander?
Yes, darling.
Are you willing to take your coat off for me?
Anything you say, darling.
Oh, no. No, no!
Oh, yes.
You mean you really want to do that?
I do.
You want to compromise me with that guy?
Ah, you seem to forget, Baker, that she's in love with that guy.
Kicks! You brute! Alexander! 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 Snoozy!
Snoozy? Calling that Snoozy?
Come on, darling. There you are. You'll be all right. Sit down here. For six years, I've been married to a brute, and I didn't know it. A divorce, yes, that's the only solution.
All right. Why don't you go to Reno?
Yes, Reno.
I don't want to go west.
Oh, darling, how are you?
Unshaken.
Would you establish residence in Pennsylvania?
Pennsylvania? It's around Philadelphia, isn't it?
In the neighborhood, yes.
That's not bad. They've got a good orchestra. It'd be easy to communicate with New York.
Very well, shall we say Pennsylvania?
All right, Pennsylvania, China, anywhere. Only let's get it over with.
Okay, let's look up Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania, Pen... ah, there. That's...
Snoozy. You're going to get your divorce if it's the last thing I do.
Section ten. Innocent spouse may get divorced provided the other spouse shall have, by cruel and barbarous treatment, rendered life intolerable and burdensome to said innocent spouse.
Sounds promising.
Shouldn't be difficult for you to be barbarous.
No, my innocent spouse, what do I have to do?
Well, let's call in a witness. Let's say, my secretary. And first, you two start a quarrel.
With pleasure.
And then, I'd say, maybe you slap her face.
Slap her face? Oh, no.
So, you can hit a man, but you don't dare strike a woman. You coward, you!
All right, I'll do it.
Very well. Now, let's rehearse the whole thing. Now, here's the plan. Ms. Akins, will you come in, please?
Right away, Mr. Jones.
Now, remember, I start to dictate a letter. As soon as I snap my fingers, you start the argument.
And when you say...
You cheap second-rate insurance peddler.
Then I hit you.
Now, Baker, don't let it stop.
Ms. Akins!
Ms. Akins!
Coming, Mr. Jones.
Sit down, please. Take this. To Walter K. Doovinmule, Capital City Bank and Trust Company, Columbus, Ohio. My dear Mr. Doovinmule, now let me see.
So, you won't tell me?
I wasn't there.
My mother saw you.
Your mother gives me a pain in the neck.
How dare you say that about my be...
Your beloved mother. Pooh!
Oh, you won't tell me, huh?
I wasn't there.
But my mother saw you!
Your mother gives me a pain in the neck!
How dare you say that about my beloved mother?
Your beloved mother, pooh!
Who are you to pooh my mother?
Your mother. Do you know what your mother reminds me of?
Hey, hey, stop, stop! Just a minute. Ms. Akins, I didn't tell you to leave.
Yes, for heaven's sakes, Ms. Akins. Sit down.
Now, read that back to me.
Mr. Walter K. Doovinmule, Capital City Bank and Trust Company, Columbus, Ohio. My dear Mr. Doovinmule...
So, you don't like my mother?
No, I don't like your whole family.
Oh, you don't?
No, I don't like your father, I don't like your brother. And you know what your mother reminds me of?
What?
Of you. That'll give you a rough idea of what I think of your mother.
You cheap second-rate insurance peddler! You cheap second-rate insurance peddler!
What she calls you, cheap second-rate insurance peddler?
Yes!
Now, look, man, our whole happiness is at stake. One good sock, here, I'll have another cognac. Now, I'll give it everything.
Read it back to me.
Walter K. Doovinmule, Capital City Bank and Trust Company, Columbus, Ohio. My dear Mr. Doovinmule...
Yeah, my dear Mr. Yeah... Everything I said about your mother still goes, and double.
Oh, it does?
Yes, it does.
Well, I still say you're a cheap second-rate insurance peddler.
Oh, so I'm a cheap second-rate insurance peddler, am I?
Yes, you are.
Say it again.
You cheap second-rate insurance peddler!
Fui! Come on, Baker, pull yourself together. You can do it. Swell guy like you.
Read it back to me.
Walter K. Doovinmule, Capital City Bank and Trust Company, Columbus, Ohio. My dear Mr. Doovinmule...
My dear Mr. Doovinmule. Did you see that, Ms. Akins? A husband slapping his wife?
Yes, did you see it?
Mrs. Baker, I am very sorry this happened in my office.
So am I.
Imagine that, a husband hitting his wife.
He had to get drunk to do it. Goodbye, Mr. Jones.
Goodbye, Mrs. Baker.
What about Walter K. Doovinmule?
Tell him I'm out. Thank you, sir.
Come in. Hello, Albert.
Good morning, sir. I hope you'll forgive me for disturbing you on Sunday.
Hmm, it's all right.
Have a late night, sir.
Yes, I've had a series of late nights. I guess I'm not as young as I used to be.
Oh, I think you look very fit, sir.
Oh, thanks, Albert. How's everything going?
Well, not so well, sir. I came to ask if in your future plans you'd have any use for me.
Have you left, Ms. Baker?
Yes, sir. I had to, on account of that musical gentleman.
Oh.
In fact, we all left, except Emma. Then she fought you, and was quite deaf.
How is Ms. Baker?
As charming as ever, sir.
Happy, I suppose.
If you'll pardon me for saying so, I think she shows great courage.
Hello.
Hello.
Where's Mrs. Baker? Jill, dear.
How did I...
Oh, I got such a thrill when you called me.
Why, shouldn't I, old Ben Baker? Sit down, Marty.
How are you, Jill?
Oh, I'm fine.
I hear you're going to Philadelphia.
Oh, did you meet Alexander?
Yes, but I didn't want to bother.
He's practicing for his new concert.
I understand.
Does it disturb you?
No, 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 I love music.
Yes, I'm going to Philadelphia.
And you're happy?
Oh, yes, very. Of course, I'm still a little bewildered. It's all so new.
I guess it's all very exciting.
Yes, very exciting. Being transferred from the business world into the world of art. Nothing but Bach and Tchaikovsky. That's Bach, he's practicing.
You sure it doesn't disturb you?
Oh, no, no, I love it. You don't have to be ashamed. Not everybody likes Bach, so if you want him to stop...
My dear, I wouldn't think of it. The whole thing sounds so very romantic.
Yes, very romantic. Oh, by the way, have you seen Larry?
Yes, yes, I saw him last night at Monte Carlo.
Larry at the Monte Carlo?
Yes.
Imagine. Just a moment. Please forgive me.
Of course.
Well, now, what were we talking about?
So, you don't like my music, eh?
Well, Alexander...
I make nothing but a lot of noise. All right. Fui!
Isn't he original?
Oh, very.
I hope you don't mind.
No, not at all.
I love to make him angry. He turns into a big grizzly bear. It must be fascinating.
Jill?
The bear. What is it?
Jill, there'll be no more music here today.
Oh, no?
No, and don't coax me, and don't tush me. As a matter of fact, there'll be no more Sebastian here today, at least not for lunch. And dinner is very uncertain.
Well, if that's the way you feel about it...
It is. Jill, I can be very impossible. Goodbye.
What fun. I only hope poor Larry has as good a time as I.
Well, when I saw him at Monte Carlo...
Oh, yes.
I suppose that was another one of those dull business evenings.
Was it a large party?
No, I'd say she was about your size.
Oh, was she attractive?
No, I didn't think so. But George and Freddy thought she was terrific. You know George and Freddy.
But what do you care?
That's right. What do I care? Larry's entitled to have a little fun. That's the kind of life he likes.
Hello? Hello, Sally, darling. I feel pretty good considering. What about you? Mm-hmm. That's right. Huh? Well, no, I'm sure you took it with you when we left for the Monte Carlo. Wait a minute. Hello? Yes, it is. All right. Goodbye.
Hello.
Hello.
You going to throw me out?
Jill, you shouldn't have come up here. It's rather embarrassing.
Well, I was just passing by.
But after all, if Sebastian finds out...
Oh, don't worry about that.
But I do. A girl engaged to be married, coming to a bachelor's apartment, and unannounced. Just a moment. Well?
I seem to be intruding.
Look, Jill, what do you want to see me about?
Someone here?
What do you want, Jill?
Well, I was driving by.
Oh, right on the thirty-first floor?
Well, you said you wanted some kind of remembrance, and I'm on my way to Cynthia Knox's tea, and I had to pass by, so I picked up a few things. Some snapshots that I've taken together. Thought you might be interested.
Thank you.
Aren't you going to look at them?
Oh, yeah. That's the first time we met. There's one of you sitting in my lap, our wedding, our honeymoon. That's very nice, thanks. Anything else?
I heard you were at the Monte Carlo last night.
Yeah.
Sleepy?
Yes. Well, give my regards to Cynthia Knox. You were on your way to Cynthia Knox's tea, weren't you?
Oh, yes, yes. I like your apartment, Larry. Lovely, charming, yes, very, very charming. In such good taste. Pretty, so cozy. Lovely curtains, and such a beautiful view. Yeah, such a beautiful view! I'm sorry. That was rather foolish. Please forgive me. Well, Larry, I did make quite a mess of things.
Oh, everything turns out for the best.
You can't mean that, Larry.
I can, and I do.
Larry, please don't make me go to Philadelphia. Please don't.
Oh, Madame has changed her mind. She gets a little tired of marriage, and she walks out, just like that. What does she care if she makes a fool of her husband, or how much she hurts him? Then she gets a little tired of piano music, and she comes back and says, "Oh, it was just a little whim of mine, so please trot back to the old homestead." You break up a whole life, and then think you can put it back together again in one afternoon. Oh, no, it's not that easy.
I didn't expect it to be easy.
To tell you what I think of you will take more than just one afternoon.
How about dinner?
Dinner?
Couldn't we just have dinner together tonight?
I'm sorry, I'm engaged for dinner.
Oh, that girl.
Yes, that girl. I don't like your tone.
I'm sorry.
First, you're trying to mess up my life, now you want to spoil that girl Sunday. Sally doesn't get every day off, you know. Sally works hard.
Oh, she does.
Now, what's wrong with that?
Nothing.
She doesn't have everything dumped in her lap like you. She hasn't time to go to crazy art galleries, play around with second-rate musicians, or go to psychoanalysts. She hasn't a husband to pay for her complexes. Sally's a mighty fine girl, much finer than your Mr. Sebastian. She doesn't wear your shirts, either.
Did he take...
Oh, skip it. Here, you promised to love, honor, and obey. And here. That's the first time we met.
That's an awful picture of me.
But you were a fine girl. I didn't bore you with my insurance then. You listened to everything. You wanted to know everything about me and my work. You wanted to help.
Oh, Larry.
And here. Remember everything you said to me.
I'd love to say it again, Larry, if you'd only give me the chance.
Just to forget it again.
No, Larry, never again. I swear. There's no use pretending. I'm defeated.
I'll always remember that tree in front of our hotel window.
And that funny old Italian voice there?
Oh, that wasn't here.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, it wasn't. No, no, here.
Oh, that's right. That's the front porch.
Our first breakfast.
Oh, Larry, couldn't we have dinner together?
Not tonight.
Why not?
Sally?
Let me talk to her.
Oh, no!
Woman to woman, she'll understand.
No, no.
Please, Larry.
Well, you don't deserve it, but I'll see what I can do.
Thank you, darling.
You stay right here. It's going to be very tough.
Sally Akins. Akins. That girl. How'd you do, Ms. Akins?
Hello, Mrs. Baker.
Nice to see you. Miss Baker would have loved to have seen you, but unfortunately, he's busy. Oh, he asked me to give you your handbag.
Oh, yes, I forgot it. I was doing some secretarial work for Mr. Baker.
Oh, secretary's work on Saturday night?
Oh, well, I'm a noted republicer.
Oh, I see. And you brought your steel?
Oh, yes.
A tray of steel. Goodbye, Ms. Akins.
Goodbye, Mrs. Baker.
Sweet, sweet.
Looks hopeless. It's much more serious than I thought. That girl's really in love with me. She adores me.
I don't blame her.
She says she can't live without me. Hardly believe her.
And I, too. It's understandable. You're very wonderful. Oh, yes, yes, you are. How about dinner?
But you know I can't.
How about after dinner?
Do you want a suicide in your conscience?
Oh, no, 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 not that.
Well, there you are.
You're right. It's hopeless.
It's too bad, Jill. Everything could have been so marvelous. There's no reason we couldn't really have been happy.
Yes, but it's too late now. It looks like the end. Goodbye, Larry, and good luck.
Good luck. I'll talk to her again.
Mrs. Baker home?
Yes.
Never mind. Guess who is back? It's Bolton, the god of gods, coming back to Earth!
A little bit softer, please.
Well, that was "That Uncertain Feeling," which could describe either Merle Oberon's hiccups, or her indecision in the selection of husbands, or neither, or both. Well, they had to call it something. I told you that you were in for a lot of talk, and I hope you enjoyed Donald Ogden Stewart's dialogue, even if you didn't believe a minute of it. Compared to what's being made today, it certainly wasn't sexy, saucy maybe, and kept moving at a frantic pace and given the famous Lubitch touch. Wish I could tell you what's in store next week, but we haven't decided ourselves, so how could you know? But come on back, and I'm sure we'll have something you'll like. And thanks for watching.
Tomorrow. Hello, I'm Nick Cattelli with Breaking West Hollywood News. The story of the day, it's what everyone's been waiting for. That's right, it's the release of the latest edition of the West Hollywood Rec Reader. We go now to our reporter in the field, Nick Cattelli, for more information on this breaking story. So, Nick, I understand it was quite a hectic scene earlier in West Hollywood. What can you tell us?
Well, that's right, Nick. Things have calmed down now, but the news of the latest edition of the West Hollywood Rec Reader caused quite a stir just moments ago. As you know, Nick, every West Hollywood Rec Reader edition available at weho.org/recreation lists all of the amazing West Hollywood recreational activities and programs for the season, and how you can easily register you and your family for all of your West Hollywood recreational needs. Just visit weho.org/recreation. As always, there are tons of programs and activities listed in every edition of the West Hollywood Rec Reader, like Junk in the Trunk, the Helen Albert Certified Farmer's Market, Fundamentals of Sports, Dance, Camp West Hollywood. There are programs for tiny tots, tots, youth, teens, adults, seniors. There's Be Well WeHo, tennis programs, and the Aquatic Center, and so much more. You can find the new West Hollywood Rec Reader at weho.org/recreation. That's the latest here from the city of West Hollywood. I'm Nick Cattelli. Nick, back to you.
Well, thanks, Nick. Once again, that's weho.org/recreation. I'm Nick Cattelli, and this has been Breaking News in West Hollywood.
Hello, it's Eddie Robinson from WeHo TV News. Maintaining your well-being and reducing stress during the coronavirus pandemic can present unique challenges. Go to weho.org/coronavirus, where you can find tips to help you stay well while at home. Tips include reaching out to your loved ones. This doesn't have to be in person, of course...